Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the West Reserve Board of Education to order. May we stand for the pledge?
Pledge, ladies and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, my God, universal, routine, and justice for all.
We have roll call, please.
Richard Glaubins?
Present.
Melissa Potts?
Present.
Ryan Banyo?
Present.
Mark Hall?
Present.
Lisa Potts?
Present.
Okay, on the agenda, treasurer's recommendations. It is recommended that the minutes of the February 13, 2014 regular meeting of the West Reserve Local Board of Education be approved as mail to each member in advance of the meeting.
Some move.
Sir.
Mr. Banyo?
Yes.
Mr. Glaubins?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Banyo?
Yes.
It is recommended that the February 2014 financial reports be approved and the February listing of bills be approved as mail to each member in advance of the meeting.
Mr. Glaubins?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Banyo?
Yes.
It is recommended that the amended excess cost agreement between Mahoney County Educational Service Center and West Reserve Local School District to include credit recovery services be approved.
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Banyo?
Yes.
Mr. Glaubins?
Yes. Superintendent's recommendations. It is recommended that February 18, 2014 be approved as a calamity day due to inclement weather conditions and forward the request to the Ohio Department of Education for a calamity day waiver.
Some move.
Second. Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Banyo?
Yes.
Mr. Glaubins?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes. It is recommended that Kara Nelson, Sulis, Claire Verando, and James R. Parker be added to the certified substitute list.
Some move.
Second.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Banyo?
Yes.
Mr. Glaubins?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Number three. It is recommended that Sherry Payter be hired as an assistant track coach and that Kevin Conway be hired as a junior high track coach for the 2014 season.
Some move. Second.
Mr. Banyo?
Yes.
Mr. Glaubins?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
It is recommended that Thomas Schugart be hired as an assistant softball coach for the 2014 season.
Some move. Second. Mr. Glaubins?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Banyo?
Yes.
It is recommended that the 2014-15 inter-district and inter-district open enrollment procedures of the West Reserve Local School District be sent to the Ohio Department of Education to verify compliance with the Ohio Revised Code, the Ohio Administrative Code, and the State Board of Education rules.
Some move.
Second. Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Banyo?
Yes.
Mr. Glaubins?
Yes.
That's just something that has to be turned in every year. We haven't changed anything. Formally, it has to be.
It is recommended that the agreement between RKS Consulting and Commissioning Incorporated and West Reserve Local Schools be renewed for the year 2014 at a cost of $5,965.
What is that? This is a company that was, it used to be part of the, with the Jackson Geothermal that did our geothermal fields, and we did a service agreement with them. They've since have gotten bigger into the oil drilling industry, and they've taken this branch of the service agreements and gave it to the engineer that did all the work, kind of as his company. So, the company name has changed to same agreement, same guy that's done that. Does a great job. He comes in, he checks our monitoring system of all the air handlers, the geothermal system, heating, cooling, ventilation, real good with Dave and Ed, and it's really a good agreement. He comes in twice a year and does a review of the whole thing. It can be something as minute as wrapping some insulation around a pipe to save energy costs, to tweaking the amount of cold air intake with the heating and cooling, glycol in the geothermal. Doug had sat with him as well. It's two visits per year that he comes in. There's, I believe it's 12 hours of personal, he'll come in for three hours a day if there's an issue that we have troubleshooting. He's available on phone. He's actually in the process of developing like a frequently asked questions website where they can go on, okay, I'm having this issue, here's some suggestions, kind of a method of, you know, conversing with other custodians and plant managers and so on. So, it's really a good deal. It's actually a little bit less than it was last year. It's one of those, every year with them, it's gonna, there's gonna be a little bit of reduction, so.
Has the heating gotten better in the middle school wing? I was hearing like it was really cold.
Yeah, we, again, part of that was some of the issues. See, what we found, what we've learned is Johnson Controls is the software programming that controls the heating and cooling and ventilation. And typically Johnson Controls wants to come and look at your issues and charge you a lot of money. And they have, they had a service agreement with them that was about $12,000 a year. And we didn't become part of that, and I think they're a little bit less responsive to our calls when we have questions. This guy's been able to pretty much take care of all the issues with that, and some of those were related to that. And the controls, and a lot of it's computer and programmed and, you know, how much air is coming in. For example, I think the days when we were below zero, we were actually bringing, because of the air exchange, we were bringing at 10 below zero air in because of the fresh air exchange. It's like, wait a minute, let's shut those down when it's 10 below. That's fine when it's 40 or 50, and we're heating it a little bit. So, some of those kind of things are, you know, with this company, has been very helpful with, so. And then we'll actually do an energy analysis of kind of a before and after to see increased efficiency. Some of our heat pumps are running up to 90, 95 percent efficiency, and so, we're getting better and better at it, and this guy's very, very helpful, so. It's a agreement we've already had, but it's just a different name.
He spent us Tuesday all day from 6:30 to 2:30. Did a really good job outlining and diagramming everything. Gave me some education on the system, so I have a little idea where things are as well. He's really, Ryan's really good. And as Jeff said, it saved us probably $15,000 from going with Johnson Control. So, and he's actually a geothermal expert, which is what we need.
Some move. Second.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Banyo?
Yes.
Mr. Glaubins?
Yes.
Mr. Glaubins?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to the addendum. Treasurer's recommendations. It is recommended that the board declares transportation for the following student impractical and submit the parents' requests for payment in lieu of providing transportation to the Mahoney County ESC governing board for approval. If approved, payment to the parents will be calculated by the State Department of Education.
You heard a bunch of those earlier in the school year, and she lost or misplaced her application and just remembered recently that she needed to submit it, so we just got it.
Okay. Some move. Second. Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Banyo?
Yes.
Mr. Glaubins?
Yes. It is recommended that the following resolution, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor, be approved. Whereas this Board of Education, in accordance with the provisions of the law, has previously adopted a tax budget or has been granted the authority by the Mahoney County Budget Commission to waive this requirement for the next succeeding fiscal year, commencing with July 1, 2013, and whereas the Budget Commission of Mahoney County, Ohio, has certified its actions hereon to this board, together with an estimate by the county auditor of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by this board, and what part thereof is without and what part within the 10 mil tax limitations. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the West Reserve Local School District, Mahoney County, Ohio, that the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission in its certification be at the same, and the same hereby accepted, and be it further resolved that there be and is hereby levied on the tax duplicate of said school district, the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the 10 mil limitation as follows. Do I need to read those?
What does this mean?
It's the same thing that we do every year. We're getting a little bit less tax money because our tax valuation, our area's tax valuation has actually gone down by about $5 million. They were 99 last year, and we're 93 this year.
I don't know, why is that?
Like businesses?
Property, property values?
Property values.
Just because the economy probably?
Just because the county says we're not worth that much anymore, so.
Wow.
But our mills haven't changed. It's not gonna hurt us at all. It's just, I thought it was very interesting that our property, personally, that our property values went down.
And be it further resolved that the treasurer of this board be, she is hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to the county auditor of said county.
Some move. I'll second.
We're getting $200,000 less tax money this year. That's a hit. That is a hit.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Banyo?
Yes.
Mr. Glaubins?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendations. It is recommended that the 2013-14 school year calendar be revised as approved by the Ohio Department of Education by canceling the waiver date of March 31st due to excessive calamity days.
This is because of the new legislature that just came out, and I guess there was kind of a misconception there, granting four additional calamity days, but not until you've used your contingency days. So, we had six calamity days so far, and we were one over. So, the way this new law comes out is, or this bill, that I don't know if the governor signed it today or not, they said he was going to, but basically what it's saying is, is after five calamity days, you need to make up four of those. So, our makeup days were at the end of the school year. We have a waiver day coming in two weeks, the kids weren't gonna be in school. I've already confirmed it with ODE. We were able to cancel that waiver day. We'll have classes on March 31st with kids. That'll be our makeup for our extra calamity day, and then we'll follow still our calendar the rest of the way out. Now, we had talked about keeping the waiver day and adding a day in June, or moving the day to the end of the year for teachers to come in as a waiver day. And then when I talked to the lady today, she said you can just cancel that waiver day, so. I'm recommending that we cancel it, kids will come to school, I'll do an all-call, we'll get it out. Everybody, kids will have classes on March 31st, and hopefully in April, we don't have any more snow. That sixth day was the day that I was out of town stranded, and Mr. McGlynn is the one that put us over the limit, so.
All right, some move on that.
Sir.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Banyo?
Yes.
Mr. Glaubins?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we have some reports, Debbie, Doug, and Jeff. So, Debbie, you want to start?
Thanks for the bus back, and I'll let me first. Throw me under the bus. From him throwing me under the bus.
Wow.
At least I was, at least.
Did you figure out how to use the off-call?
No, I still don't have directions for the off-call, yeah. Don't give it to me.
Murphy, Murphy friends. Yeah.
Yeah. Taking shots there.
The boy's done.
I like how he just shifts out of it.
Wow.
Just pitch it this way.
Well, this weekend is the Spelling Bee at YSU, and we have Colin Meehan representing the elementary school at the Spelling Bee, so that'll be, he's so excited. And he said, I know every word in that book. And I said, well, I'm glad you do, because I guess they had to go find new words at one of the Spelling Bees in, what was it, Iowa or somewhere, they ran out of words. So, they had to go get more, take a break and find more words. So, I hope he knows all the words in both books now, but anyway, so he is, he's very excited about that. We did do bowling last night for the family night. We went out and bowled, and not a great turnout, but it was fun. I think the weather hurt us a bit, but anyway. Next week, we have kindergarten registration. Right now, we have, I think, 34 signed up to register. That's a small number, but we always get more in. We get drop-ins, we get people that go, oh, I didn't realize, and they call up and they do registration. So, I'll let you know at the next meeting where we are with the registration. We have a couple, well, right now, we've been doing that family literacy group. I told you, we got that grant, that really nice grant, and it's been a really good thing. We knew that we had to get families involved. That was our whole, kind of our hypothesis, is if you get a family involved, in order to make kids move, we can only do so much here, and we do it, but you have to get family involvement. We have 96 percent continued involvement, and the only reason that we've had absences is because of sickness. And then they've actually, and this was the thing that was so shocking to me, we hired, we contracted with Marsha Nadasky back, is a liaison, because she's so good at reading. They have contacted her, when they've been absent, they contact her, and she meets with them and actually brings them up to speed. If they're having trouble, they call her, they email her. So, that was something that I wasn't real sure if they would do that, but they're doing that on their own now. The other thing that's kind of nice is when the parents, how this whole thing is set up is, at the beginning, we have dinner together, and we do it, we do some kind of a theme, like we just had, well, this month, next week, we're doing weather. So, they always get books, they get a nonfiction book and a fiction book, and they're comparative, so they're both about weather, where our fiction book is cloudy with a chance of meatball, so we're having spaghetti, meatballs, bread, salad, things like that for our dinner. So, we start with the dinner, and then somebody from the library comes and reads two stories to the families. And they bring puppets and all kinds of things. Sometimes we have the therapy dogs that come in from Akron Children's Hospital, too, and they work with the kids during the time. Then the parents will come in here, the kids who are the at-risk readers, they go into the little library, and their siblings go for babysitting and games back in the kindergarten room. And then what happens in the little library, they do a reading, some kind of an activity. It's usually kind of a make and take reading activity. Here, the parents actually learn how to use the things that they're making in there. And so, it's been a really, the parents are so grateful for the things that they get, and they're using them because they come back and we have a share session, and they're actually using them now that they got the iPads, they're taking pictures of, you know, catching the kids reading and doing the activities that they're doing. So, it's been a really, really good thing. We're benchmarking the kids, and they've grown by at least two reading levels, which is a good thing, so. So, that's just kind of a report on how that is. That's our literacy group. We have a, camp is coming back. We are going May 7th through 9th to Hiram House Camp. It's a beautiful camp. It's very, and we have the whole camp to ourselves. The people, the director lives on the camp, so they're there all the time. They will be doing, they'll be doing archery, canoeing, streamwater studies, some dichotomous keys and nature studies, and then they'll also be doing the high ropes courses, which is for team building. So, that's kind of, it's gonna be new. The cabins are beautiful that the kids stay in. They're brand-new log cabins that have like a commons area where you could do some classes and things like that, so very, very nice. And then we're having a safety day, May 9th, and Danielle and John Tomaino are actually organizing that. All kinds of safety things, bicycle safety, seatbelt safety, they're bringing in some like horseback riding, all kinds of different things for safety. The Explore the Outdoors Day, we're still planning that for May 17th. I would love for you to come. We have 300 people responded in the survey that they're gonna be coming. It's May 17th. It's from 9 till 3, unless you'd like to camp. And if you'd like to camp, you are more than welcome to camp for free. And at night, every time I go to these meetings, at these meetings that we have, more people show up, and so I'll say, who is this? So, now we're going into the evening, and a couple of guys from the Department of Wildlife came and they said, hey, do you care if we do this? I'm not gonna say the right word, but this electric fish shocking at night, where they shot, sent the electric current into, I said, listen to me. At night, I don't want it to be like super, I want people to be able to do what they want, but if you wanna shock fish in the lake at night, you go right ahead, and I'll let people know what you're doing. And bioluminescent insects, they're gonna be finding those at night if they want to. We're gonna have the telescopes out from YSU, and they're gonna do barn owls at night. During the day, the birds of flight. We have so many activities going on during the day. It's been, the agencies, I'm so grateful to have them, and they're so grateful to connect with the schools, so it's been a really good partnership, lots and lots of agencies. So, it'll be fun. We just found out, I got a $500 grant from Step Outside to put toward this, so that's a nice little, that's a nice little incentive there.
Going back to the safety, you can go over. Joy Lou Kennick used to have a safety town.
Yes.
And I know she kept it in her barn.
Okay.
Because we were gonna do it when, back in the day when I was with PTO.
Okay.
And she has, I think she still has it all, so you might wanna contact her.
Okay.
And I wanna see if there's like a firehouse and all kind of really cool stuff that would be great for the kids.
That would be awesome. All right, that would be great.
And it belongs, I mean, I think, I do believe so.
And then they can ride their bikes through and stuff, or?
Something. It's like a little town.
High houses, sturdy.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, like pedestrian crossings and whatnot.
Do you know where that is?
I wanna say it's in Joy's barn.
Who's?
Joy Lou Kennick's barn.
I'll call.
We've been looking for.
Oh, okay.
I heard that Mr. Zatchak's gonna dress up like the fireman.
That's what I heard.
Smokey the Bear?
Smokey the Bear.
On TV.
If it's a gopher bear, she may know who has it.
But Debbie Tomaino was looking for that for one of the things he was doing.
I think, you know what, I'll call her, I'll call her tomorrow and see. That's kind of neat. Smokey the Bear, that was good. We need you often. And then the last thing I have is, we are going to be doing the Success by Six program again through the United Way. They pay us to do that, and it's our students, anybody that's coming into kindergarten in the summer, it's three weeks in the summertime, kind of as a jump start for them to get back into school. I can tell you, the teachers are working hard, they're getting ready for our new testing. Next year, I just was at a meeting today, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Zatchak if I can tell you, next month, kind of go over some of the changes curriculum-wise that are happening in the testing. Next year, not the third graders, it's the other students in reading alone, language arts alone, they're gonna have five tests in language arts alone. They could have up to 16 tests next year, each child. Just know that that's coming. Fourth through 11th grade. And so. That's just, that's just kind of what, that's the shift from 1 to 6. So, we'll, I'd like to go over that with, maybe next month, we can do that, go over the curriculum stuff and how things are changing. Just, and there's also, I'll email you, and you can forward it to them, there's going to be something on the new testing and the new, there's a kind of a workshop or an information session for school board members in Portage County in April, and I can't remember, well, I may have it here, hang on. I may have it right here. There's, it's in April, and if I don't have it real quick, then I can at least get it to you, but there is something for school board members, and you'll have to register through OSBA? Yeah, you have to register through them, but I'll get that date to you. It's for the new testing and the new standards and everything, it's just for school board members, just to give you information about it, and it's a big change. And you have a test afterwards.
You have to test afterwards.
That's it, that's all. I don't wanna talk anymore.
On those same lines, for the high school, looking at the new park assessments, which is what she's talking about, along with OGT and everything else, 6 through 12, we're looking at next year, 31 testing days with all, with the park testing, end-of-year exams, pre- and post-test, midterm. Greg Malito and I figured out, we're looking at 31 days. And on the, yeah, I know, it's become a, almost all nine weeks of nothing but standardized tests. Yeah, we are in the middle right now of the OGT tests, which today we had to do writing because yesterday we had a power outage and we couldn't get the test started. On the writing, this year, there were three extended writing instead of two. One of the writing items was the park assessment. It was a question off the park assessment, which is the new assessments that'll be coming out. It took the kids quite a while, which is okay, but the third prompt, which was the park assessment, was a very in-depth, critical thinking, three-step process of writing out the whole thing. It took them a little bit longer, but every school district got that third writing prompt this year, just to kind of see how they do on that. Along those lines, next week, she mentioned, Kristen Higgins will be starting practice next week, I believe, next Friday. Or she's doing hers tomorrow. We're doing ours next Friday. She's doing the math park test, the pilot for fifth graders. That'll be, involve two tests of 80 minutes and one test of 60 minutes, so it's gonna be quite a bit for fifth graders. At the high school next Friday, for the 10th graders, keep in mind, we're coming off five days of testing, and now we'll have to finish Monday with the last test because we had the power outage. Next Friday, we'll start the practice, and just setting up the test, the park test for English Language Arts. That is two two-hour tests and one 80-minute test for the kids.
That's just language arts.
Yeah, that's just English Language Arts, three tests.
What's that?
It's not part of our grade.
No, no.
That's nothing. And the bad thing about, the good thing is you see the test. You actually, your kids get to experience the test, go on the computers, because it's all computerized, we have to shut the labs down for three days, and then we have to shut the library down also because we don't have enough computers, because you can't use the laptops, so you have to use actually the computers. That'll be a test on literary, easy for you to say.
Literary.
Literary, thank you, analysis, and research simulation, and then narrative writing. So, again, it's back to a three-stage test for them, it's gonna take them roughly five to six hours. So, we have to show them next Friday how to set it up, how to go into the computer and get ready for the test, and then the 25th, 26th, we're gonna test them both those days, Again, come them back with another two days of tests, just to get an idea, look at the park. Now, the park assessments right now are in the legislature, whether or not they're gonna do them. Next year, legislators are getting feedback from different districts and stuff. But if you add that in there, you're gonna add at least a month of time, because the park, the way it's set up, we're gonna be doing third through eighth, through third to 11th. So all those kids, at some point, we have to get them all on computers.
Or laptops, or iPads or something.
Whatever we can get them on, it'll be, for the practice, we can't use the laptops. So it's gonna be quite a, quite a task. Dan Hill and Greg Melito set for four hours one day on a webinar on the park exam. Funny thing is, some of the questions people were asking, the park people couldn't answer. So, I don't know.
Oh my gosh.
Well, the park is more of a critical thinking, it's a much longer in-depth questioning system than the O G T.
It's a two-step question process.
Everything's two or three steps in the questions. So if you only do one part of the question, you're gonna miss the question.
If you get, they have one part that's information, they get to actually do the, they have to know it's a knowledge-based. If you get that, you get one point. Let's say that's A part, and then there's the B part. The B part is like, is kind of like, how did you get to it? If you get A and you don't get B, you get one point. If you get A and B, you get two points. If you get B but not A, you get zero points, because they feel like you just guessed well.
Yeah.
So it's.
And to get to C, you have to get A and B.
Yeah, to get C.
Or you get no credit, so. And the bad thing is, the bad part of it is, we won't get results of how our kids do. They're not gonna give you, they're just gonna give you statewide result. This is how, how kids did. They're not gonna say this is how Western Reserve kids did.
But it doesn't affect our rating or?
No, it does not.
Not this year. This is a pilot.
Yeah, this is a pilot. Next year it will, it will affect the rating.
One of the concerns, one of the concerns is, it's, one of the shifts is test complexity. So now, it used to be that, in the O A As and the O G Ts, everything was written at like a third or fifth grade level. Now, because there's something called text complexity, it's going to be, how you're paying. It's going to be written on, like the third graders, their passages are gonna be written on a third to fourth grade level. The ninth graders, so if you have students that are struggling readers, like somebody that has an I E P, anybody that's identified with a reading disability has to be at least two years below grade level. So a ninth grader is actually going to be at a seventh, maybe a sixth or seventh grade level, but their test is gonna be written on a ninth to 10th grade level. So that's, they're not lodging, they're not lodging.
There's no combinations.
No combin, no.
No combinations.
Not for the reading, they can read the questions, like the kids all have to have headphones, and the questions can be read to them on the computer. But the text cannot be read.
Right.
They have to read the text on their own.
It's gonna be, in the practice, the practice, there's no help at all for the I E P students.
No, there's nothing. No accommodations right now for this year.
That'll be interesting, we'll see how that goes. The O G T testing this week is going really smooth, except for the power outage we had yesterday. Kids are doing a great job with that. We take them over to the reserve gym, so it's nice and quiet, and they're by themselves. They've really taken their time and worked on the test. They've done very well at that, no one's rushing through things. It's going very, very well. But the bad thing is, we have to go, Monday was gonna be a makeup day, and now Monday we have to give the social studies on Monday. So we're just one day behind because of that. But it's better that we didn't start before the power outage, because then we would have to do all kind of stuff with the state, because we started and stopped. Also, we, on the 28th, we'll be doing a trip with our ninth graders to the Career Center to view a program called Cutting Edge in Manufacturing. And all of our ninth graders are going to that. Our time, I believe, is 9:45, they put us an hour and, 15 hour and a half blocks. So we'll be going on the 28th to that program. The blood drive for N H S, our second blood drive will be the 24th of this month. Also, not 24th, 24th of April, I'm sorry. No, 24th this month, what am I thinking? It's coming up. It's on my day, I'm okay.
You're good.
I'm trying to get that bus.
You've had a long day, haven't you?
Long week.
You have.
Also, the freshman kids have started meeting, anti-bullying campaign program. They started today with a meeting here, and you see around the school, there'll be different signs. The middle school's following that with their own anti-bullying program as well. And that seems to be going pretty well. The junior high kids will be going on their D C trip on the 28th of March, and they'll be back on the 30th, that night of the 30th. That 30th is also the winter sports banquet night, which I'm sure Mr. Martik will talk about. We had our dance last week, there were only probably 40 kids there, but they had fun.
Fun.
They had fun, they had a good time. The guys don't dance, they chase each other around, and the girls actually do dance.
Throw balls.
It's a junior high dance, yeah, throw balls, that's, they're exciting, they don't dance. But we did have the dance, we had our junior high banquet Tuesday night. Did a nice job, the coaches did a really nice job. Our junior high boys teams finished 14 and 1, 8th grade, 7th grade was 11 and 4. So a lot, both those teams did very well. The 8th grade team won the I T C L tournament, junior high tournament. Both girls teams did very well, 9 and 4, 1, and I don't remember, Joe didn't say what his record was with the others. But had a good turnout for that. Thank you Debbie for, she's my ordering lady, she takes care of all, she's the party girl.
Party girl.
She sets up the, she helps set up the party stuff.
You're cute.
I know.
You're the entertainer.
I'm the entertainer, she's the party girl.
You're the entertainer.
I'll try to see what else we have. And that's, also the O A A, I will tell you, the O A A, we have the option to back the O A A up one week. So we backed it up, instead of starting the 21st, right back from Easter vacation, we backed it up because we had that option, by moving it back a week, so that first week back, we'll be able to actually do some help and some instruction and tutoring, and then we'll do it the following week.
Get them back.
Yeah, we'll start.
And remember, this year is the year that all the third graders have to pass either the fall or the spring administration, or we have mandatory retention unless we can, unless we can show the growth. We have been, we have been collecting short-cycle assessment data to show growth through the year, performance-based assessment data, and actual products, artifacts, to show growth through the year. We can also test at our own expense in the summertime. If there's anybody we can use, the Iowa, the Terranova, or the, there was another one, I can't remember. But there's three, we can choose one of them and test in July, give them just one more test after we remediate. But yeah, they have to, they have to either pass it or retention.
And one last thing, spelling bee, our spelling bee participant is Taylor Garner from the 7th grade. She's already, she's been practicing for weeks. She's ready to go come Saturday. So good luck to her at 9 o'clock, they start that program.
Amazing what you guys do, it really is, thank you. Thank you for everything.
Good report.
Mr. Martik. And I think I was gonna say, is proms on Friday, right?
May 2nd.
May 2nd. Patrick Proms, May 3rd. Winter sports wrapped up a few weeks ago. Most of you know the girls' basketball, they won a district title, they played in the regionals over in Maslin. Not fair so well, but I mean, the team that they played, I think, beat Kyoga Heights, they're playing in the state semifinals this weekend. So, and I think they scored that game like 22-20 or something like that.
Yeah, 22-21.
So it was a really intense game too. They won a share of the I T C L, and they won the district title, and Steve Miller, I believe, was Northeast Ohio Coach of the Year for our district. So, and we had a couple of girls recognized, I believe, for all league, two of them, I don't think any made Northeast District though, because they're juniors. I believe Paige Ewing is playing in the Al Booba Classic, which is at the end of March. And there's two other girls, oh, I don't know, I don't know if any of the girls are playing in the I T C L one.
We don't know.
We're hosting that, we're hosting that on March 27th. We're hosting that game here, the girls will start at 6:30, the boys will be at 7:45, and there's three-point shootouts at halftime. So I gotta look and see who, if any of our kids are participating. I'm sorry, what? All league? I don't believe so. Not first team.
Second team?
Second team.
Joe got honorable mention, special mention.
Yeah, Joe Flask made honorable mention. There were four girls, I believe Lee Hughes and Rachel Maslik with me, first team. I believe Tori White made second team, and Paige and Laura Flask were honorable mention I T C L. I'm pretty sure that's how it played out, but you had to be a senior to play in a game, and I don't think any of ours got selected. Boys did okay this year, Patty Deltorio's first year, he did a nice job. You could see improvement and growth throughout the year, so I mean, everybody seems to be real encouraged by that. Hope to have those evaluations done for the next meeting, probably within the next week. I'll have those finished, along with the cheerleading one, I said the All-Star Basketball Game. Sports banquet, Mr. McGlynn touched on, March 30th at 6:00 P M at Alakar Catering, if any of you are interested, let us know. Grand Iron Bowling Event is March 22nd at 6:00 P M at Amron Lanes. Encourage everyone to come, it's a good time. Basketball's doing a new fundraiser this year. It's not until May, at the end of May, I believe it's May 24th. They're doing a casino bus, they're taking two buses over to Pittsburgh Casino, and that's their fundraiser, a way of raising money for them. Baseball's working on a lot of fundraiser now, they sell basically three tickets, and it goes with the P A lottery. Every Friday or Saturday, you pick the number, and if your number's that on a ticket, then you win a portion of that money. Girls and boys basketball combined, they're both doing it. It's, I believe it's May 24th, I'm pretty sure. Pitcher Day is March 25th for spring sports. They've all been up and going and really hitting, getting at it this week. Varsity Track, I believe has around 50, I have to do the eligibility sheets to make sure, but it's real close to 50, 45 to 50 people. Junior High Track is 55 this year. Boys Baseball is, I believe, around 27 to 30, somewhere around in that ballpark. And then Girls Softball is 20 to 23. So we have a good number of our kids participating in the spring, which makes it nice. Our relay, we have our, our three meets for track. Every year, varsity invitation will be April 12th, and I actually looked today, I didn't think as many teams that already committed is, are on there. Right now, there's 20, and there's very few in the area that have that many. The one that's really popular is the Poland one, but they get teams from all over the state and part of Pennsylvania. They have, I believe, 69 teams go to that one, call it the optimist. That's probably the largest, ours is right up there with that, we have around 20 to 24 every year. So that's, that's a real good, basically fundraiser for our track program. Junior High Invitation will be around, there'll be around 12 to 16 teams for that one, that's on April 26th. And then we have a high school relay meet at the beginning of May, that's this year on May 1st, and it will be between nine to 12 teams. You hate to get more than eight, but once you go over eight, you might as well go to 16 or 12. So we'll try to get as many teams here as we can, you know, try to make a little bit of money during the spring for us, as well as the boosters. I'm gonna try to have the financial report to you for the end of basketball and through, whatever it turns out now, at the next board meeting, so you have a better idea of where we're at with the athletic budget. League changes, Mr. McGlynn and I sit on a board, and some of you may be aware, the league is changing in 2015. So we're going through that process right now, superintendent's voted on it the other day, and approved it, and we're just waiting, probably in April, was it April 17th or something?
April 7th.
April 7th. They will pick a pill to know where they go at in the schedule, and then we'll have a better idea of our schedules for the next few years.
Will it still be called the I T C L?
It'll still be called the I T C L, it'll be three leagues, or three tiers. It'll be a red, a red tier which consists of Springfield, United E P, the bigger schools, South Range, Crestview, those five.
Yeah, Crestview.
The middle tier is Leetonia, Wellsville, Lisbon.
Columbiana and Southern.
Southern. And then the bottom six are the schools our size. So it'll be some mandatory crossover and some different things. Basketball and baseball, you'll play each team in your division twice, and then you'll play everybody else once. So you'll be, basically have 20 scheduled games, yeah.
So if you can play a South Range, we can go above our tier to play it in football?
That'll be, well, you can do it in your non-league games, but it'll be a mandatory crossover for one, for two of your games, for two of our games. Three for the top two, red and white, they'll have three mandatory crossovers.
Our weeks right now are week four and five, be our mandatory crossover week. You can still play anyone, say if we picked Lisbon and you pick, we get one from the, the middle, one from the top. So maybe we say, we have Lisbon and Crestview, that still means if we want, we can play South Range and Columbiana as an out-of-league independent.
It's gonna make, I mean, it'll make it a little easier for scheduling. Some schools don't like it as much as far as scheduling goes, some of the bigger schools, because they worry about computer points, where a lot of smaller schools, we don't have to necessarily worry about that as much, because if they play smaller schools, they don't get as many points, where if we play bigger schools, we get more points. So it really benefits us in the grand scheme of things. I think that might be it.
That means you'll have three All-Stars teams instead of.
Yeah.
You'll have.
Give more chances to kids.
Each, each division will have an All-Star team.
Yeah. Each division will have a league champion, it won't be a league champion for the whole thing. It'll be a red champ, a white champ, and a blue champ.
Instead of two.
More opportunities for kids, yeah. So, and I think eventually they may look at some kind of expansion, but I think that's down the road a few years away. So I'm pretty sure that's it. I mean, I encourage everybody to go to the fundraisers that we have, and you know, be supportive of our groups, they do a lot of work for us, and we appreciate everything they do, so I encourage you to do that. Any questions?
I just have a couple of things here. I gave you a copy of the evaluations, and those are the fall head coaches, and what I'd like to do is put them on the April agenda for approval for next fall. They all had, Jeff said, they all had great seasons, and things went well. Just to update you, the Straight A Fund on the solar panels, we are going to submit another application. Not a lot of changes to it, we actually got fairly confusing ratings on it, because it seemed like everything was really good, a lot of exemplary marks, and so we're not real sure what the problem was. There was some confusion with the budget table and a couple of things. So we're gonna tweak that, resubmit that, that was for the solar panels. The same company that did that also asked me if I would be okay with them writing another grant through the U S Department of Agriculture, I think it was, to put, the proposal would be to put solar panels on the, she said, just on the elementary wing, apparently because of direction, they would be roof mounted, it would be, but still, it's, if it's 20% energy production, it's still. So I said, yeah, go ahead, and you know, we'll see how that goes. So they seem real, real interested in trying to make some work for us, so we will see where that goes. Just real quick, you may have seen something on the new referendum coming out from the Ohio High School Athletic Association on competitive balance, principals vote on that in May, early May. I was at a meeting the other day, and I'm gonna, Jeff sent me the rosters, I'm gonna look. It looks to me like regardless of your school, if you have open enrollment kids, there's gonna be an addition for every open enrollment kid on your roster. So whether it's a parochial school with open enrollment kids, or Western Reserve with open enrollment kids, the addition is the same. The only difference that they're looking at doing is, is they're assigning a feeder school. Obviously, our feeder school is our school district. Any students that you have that came open enrollment after 7th grade is a higher figure. So I'm not sure how it's gonna work, I'm not sure it's gonna level anything, other than.
How do you measure it?
Making the, well, it'll be from the rosters that you submit, and the E M S data that says, this student is open enrollment, this student is resident. Kind of the ironic thing is, parochial schools don't submit to E M S, so.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Not really sure who quantifies and checks that. So I don't know where that's gonna go, but doing some checking on it and trying to see what effect it would have on us, and see where we are. You know, a lot of our open enrollment kids have been in the system all along, and those are, that's gonna be no difference, whether they came kindergarten or 6th grade, that's gonna be the same addition to our numbers. If they came 7th or 8th grade, then that would, that would be a bigger addition, so we'll have to look at that. Just real quickly, our school resource office, I have met in the last month with both Ellsworth and Berlin trustees, just kinda giving them a report of the things he's done, and they, both township trustees were very thrilled with what was going on, and looking to continue that same agreement that we have, which really makes it possible for us to have him here in school. So that was a good thing. I know Bill Capbienca has been writing grants to try and help everybody with funding on that, and he's always looking for stuff on that too. It's been going great, and hopefully that will continue. Last thing I have here, before we go to executive session, is the P T O auction is tomorrow at 6:00. They've got a lot of stuff, there's probably gonna be some deals, if you are into auctions, that, I know the one, one of the businesses, the one lady came to the P T O meeting the other night, I'm not sure which one, so I don't say which business, but one either in Ellsworth or Berlin, that gave her $100 worth of instant lottery tickets.
Berlin that gave her a hundred dollars worth of instant lottery tickets. So I'm sure they're gonna have a lottery basket that, if you're into rubbing those things and seeing what you win. A lot of food and gift certificates for restaurants and that kind of stuff. Like I said, the auction starts at six o'clock. And I did include with the coaches' things that calamity day, that's that bill, and really the first bullet point and the fifth bullet point are the ones that, you know, we're talking about, and it's that they've given four additional calamity days, but that's after you've used four of your makeup days. So really, those schools that use more than nine snow days probably are gonna make out a little bit. We're just gonna have to make one up like we would have, so this really doesn't help us too much. The only thing that this does is it allows you to adjust your calendar, which is what we were doing tonight with the waiver day. You could, you know, do some different things, try and make up some of those days, so the wording on that's for you. I think that's all. Anything else? Do a motion to...